Okay, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn our executive session and reconvene the special meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Ross.
I will make a motion to adjourn the executive session and return to regular session.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Do I hear a second?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Parkinson?
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Ern.
Yes.
Dr. Drew.
Yes. Next on the agenda is to a work session for a discussion on reopening the schools.
Okay, so as you may know, the governor's office has made announcements for impending guidelines to be announced. And I said announcements to make announcements, I mean that. And then we get to that day and then we make an announcement that we're not making one today. We're going to, and it's been kicked down the can, it's been kicked down the road for quite a while. Our latest understanding is that the governor's office will give guidance on Thursday. This is well past any original dates that we understood the guidance to be. But I have met with four different local boards of health and all superintendents from those school districts. We've had an opportunity to get together to include all of Lake County. The, our understanding is that we will be, that the guidelines from the state will be just that, guidelines and recommendations, not requirements. And that ultimately, the authority that is going to make or implement stiff or hard guidelines to follow will be the Lake County Board of Health. So their director is a man named Ron Graham, and we've had extensive conversations. And we believe that the opening that I'm going to propose will be in congruence with his requirements from Lake Health. And that is, you've heard a lot of stories about busing, masks, alternating school days, hybrid models, et cetera, et cetera. I would propose that we have as an option for parents that we would open fully, operate all of our classes as we normally would, with the exception that we will remove as any non-essential furniture from every classroom, so that we can space to the extent possible every desk in every classroom. Our surveys indicate that, that we did previously, that we might see as many as 20% of our students not return to school. I'll talk about that, where we would expect them to be. I'll talk about that in a minute. But that would reduce the number of students in our hallways. We would do things like directional hallways when we can, add additional lunches to the extent that we can manipulate the schedule, so that we can thin the numbers down. Obviously, require some distancing for students as they matriculate through the lines. There would be required seating on our buses, but our buses would be running at full capacity. All of our buses would run. I would propose that we run all of our buses. And we fill them as we normally would. Now again, I expect that to be, if 20% of our students don't return, and then certainly some parents will opt to drive and not transport on school buses, so that will thin the number of buses. And we'll spread them out, and there'll be assigned seating on our buses. There'll be assigned seating in all of our classrooms, which is not a major change for elementary schools, but it is for high school students, for example. But the reason for that, that is, we understand that will be a requirement of Lake County Board of Health, because if a COVID case does appear, they want to be able to trace who that student was sitting next to, interacting with. So that, that's an important measure. And I don't think a large sacrifice on the part of our student population. I think it's important, we will significantly increase our cleaning protocols. We're reviewing the, we're reviewing right now, do we have the enough equipment, the sprayers, et cetera, et cetera. And do we have the personnel to be able to do that on a daily basis. I would submit to you that that might be an area where I'm going to need some additional help. I could do that through additional subs, but that's a possibility as, as we review that. But overall, school is in session, and we are operating in session. We have purchased two masks, washable masks for every staff member. At this point, it is my understanding, again, subject to change from the governor's announcement, that the local boards of health will have the authority to determine whether masks are required. It is my understanding that masks, at this point, would not be required, so those would be optional. We would significantly limit the number of visitors in our buildings. And large group meetings, we wouldn't hold in our schools to the extent possible. If you hear that news, and that frightens you for your child, for whatever reason, underlying health condition, or just simply that, that makes you fearful, then you would have the option, and a window set up in July, we send a lot of correspondence home to our parents explaining this, but they would have the opportunity to, to opt in an online program based on a platform called Schoolology, which we will, we think's a great platform. It's an interactive platform with our teachers, so that it is not simply a student watching a camera in a classroom that they can't really interact much in. Rather, it's a dedicated staff member to those students, those group of students, to do, take what we were doing before, and do it better than what we were doing before. Because there'll be, all of our training in the fall, when we come back to school, will focus on, not just for those teachers that will be teaching online, but for all teachers to be prepared to go online. So I'm anticipating somewhere about, in the range of about 80% of our students back in the traditional classroom setting, knowing that they are taking some inherent risks. We follow all the guidelines and requirements of the local health board. Those students who are uncomfortable, which we're anticipating about 20%, would be all online. And then, of course, we need to be able to be, for, one of the protocols we're going to put in place, for example, is every, we will identify in the first few days of school, what students need Chromebooks, and what students need hotspots. We will assign those to those students, but not give them to them. And then the, in the event that we need to go online, and we need to be flexible, and be able to do that in a moment's notice, then on that last day, we have the students, we will issue those Chromebooks and hotspots to those students in need. Or otherwise, you create inequities in access to the curriculum and access to the instruction. That would be based on somebody's ability to buy equipment. So we want to prevent that from happening, which is exactly what we did on March 16th or 17th. Patrick McKinney, really, and his staff did an outstanding job of getting those organized and out to kids. So again, just in summary, the plan would be that we would open school, buses, buses filled to whatever capacity they fill, classrooms at regular numbers, spaced the best that we can, additional cleaning protocols, masks optional. And we are in school on our, generally, our regular scheduled time. I, we are trying to work to take a few of our professional development days that come later in the year, and move them to the beginning of the year, if that's possible. That may not be possible, but still starting on or about our regularly scheduled start time. Those students who are uncomfortable with that, or families who are uncomfortable with that, would have the online option that they could opt into.
Is that option, then, for the year? Or is that?
And this, this will be the most difficult part of that. We're saying that if you opt in, you are opted in through at least the first semester. So you would not have the flexibility to move. And that isn't because we're trying to be rigid. It's because we are basing our staffing numbers on who's in the classroom and who's not. And if it's fluid, and kids are floating back and forth,
Right.
What it essentially will do is drive up our staffing numbers.
Right.
So we will allow a transition, and that would give us a couple of weeks over, over Christmas break or winter break, to make changes with staffing, based on the number of kids who may or may not transition back and forth. But if, and it's going to be very important for parents, if you want to opt in, you must opt in in the window that we provide, which is going to be in the July timeframe, just a couple of weeks in July, because obviously, we got a staff after that, and let those teachers know, am I online? Am I not online? And those teachers that are online will be teaching from a district facility. That's still to be determined, but we're looking at our options. Where to best house those teachers. And we don't, right now, we don't know how many, you know, is it, is it 25? Is it 40? You know, we don't know.
And well, there'll have to be teachers, possibly all across the spectrum, like elementary teachers and in the high school, because this is probably going to grab kids from,
Sure.
Like every, every building, or every, every layer of the education?
Sure. So for example, let's say, we end up with 50 second graders from across the district who opt out. Then you're going, we would need to peel off two second grade teachers from our existing buildings, because they would have declining enrollment, obviously, and move them into the, to the distance of learning. But that's going to happen in every grade level, kindergarten through 12th. And we have to control that and manage that the very best we can. And that's why we can't let it be fluid.
Sure.
We would never be able to accurately staff.
So in, in your meetings with the other superintendents and, and boards of health, does this seem to be what's going to be happening across the county?
I anticipate that all, I, I don't want to speak for the other superintendents, but my understanding is that, well, certainly, our discussions were about all schools, I believe are at least strongly considering coming back all in.
Okay. And of course, all of this is being vetted through the Lake County Board of Health.
That's right. And so, of course, if the, if the governor's office comes out and announces on Thursday that, so, for example, if the governor said, "Social distancing on buses is not a guideline, it is a requirement," meaning every other seat, one student per seat, that would render us completely unable to transport.
Right.
That, that would be fiscally, fiscally, it would be impossible. Physically, it would be impossible.
Yeah, logistically.
We couldn't hire the drivers. I mean, the list is long of why that simply is not doable. The governor's office might say, for example, that every student who's on the buses must wear a mask. And if that's the case, then every student who rides the bus must wear a mask.
Right.
So the, the, the details are certainly subject to change. But my best guess is that the deciding factor will be the Lake County Board of Health.
Okay. As far as like the cleaning supplies and materials, do, have you already ordered those? Do you know if there's any shortages potentially, or are you not that?
We have ordered them. We've ordered masks, cleaning equipment, sprayers. Had a meeting today with a, with a gentleman who's going to put me in contact with some other people who actually make it. But there's, this sounds crazy, but there is a, a process, a machine of sorts, that you, it's about $30,000, that you put in the supplies, you've into it, and it creates your own sanitizer.
Sanitizer.
And then, what would, and, and what would normally, to, to give you an idea, the cost savings on that might be $2,000 to produce these hand sanitizer we need through this machine. That would have probably cost us somewhere over a million dollars to buy it from a vendor. That much difference. But we have to investigate it a little bit more and see what the availability of that is. At minimum, it would be great to have that product to put in our sprayers at night, to spray all the buildings. And it's just a matter of now trying to figure out, how many sprayers do we have, and how well can we clean? And there are some other protocols that we can put in place to help. For example, something as simple as keeping your door open. Teachers will not be able to close their doors. I know that will frustrate some of them. But the reason for that is, it prevents 25 kids from touching the door handle every period, over and over and over. So if we just open it in the morning, the custodian opens it in the morning, wipes it down, then there's no need for anybody to touch that door unless we were to go into a lockdown. And then, of course, you know, for, we would,
Right.
That, that would clearly supersede worrying about somebody touching a door handle. So those are little things that we'll put in place. Traffic patterns, the best that we can. Some, some buildings, you see them in restaurant, or not restaurants, but grocery stores, for example, retail stores, where they're trying to keep people from doing this. We'll do the best we can to do that. Of course, as you, if you all know me, you know that tape makes me shudder, trying to put that all over the place. But I'm afraid I'm going to have to acquiesce on the tape and put tape down on things. But we'll buy, of course, the tape that you're supposed to buy to do that. But we'll have to have directional arrows and some of those things down as well. But we'll, we'll take every precaution we can to make kids safe to return to school. But there is, of course, an inherent risk in doing that. And, and that's just going to have to be a parental decision for them to make. But we, but we also understand that it's been very, very difficult on a lot of families not to be in school, and we're, we're creating, we're creating learning gaps as well. So we know we're going to have to reteach at the beginning of the year, for example. You always have to do that to some extent, because of the summer loss. But now it's, you know, it's, it's from March on.
That's right.
Oh, like what about, I, I understand the touching of the doorknob. What about some stuff like testing? Like if there's a big test, and it's lunch hour for a couple of classes, and the teacher wants to shut the door, because she's giving a test or something like that?
Yeah, I, I'm sure that there are always exceptions where, you know, and hopefully, we can have, you know, the goal will be to have wet wipes and Clorox wipes.
Or like a paper towel to grab the door.
The best we can. I mean, there, we have to be reasonable about our, our requirements. But I, I think if the teachers understand the why, that it just makes a lot of sense to not have 25 hands hit it on the way in, and 25 hands hit it on the way out, that that makes sense. And we'll help our custodians, and we'll help. And I know we've heard a lot of different things about, from the CDC even, about how long does it stay on a surface, and how long does it spread? And, and I'm not a medical expert, so we're going to take the precautions that we think make the most amount of sense.
Sure.
So that's, that's really all I have. Now, the intent is that tomorrow, pending, you know, give you tonight to absorb what I said. If you have any concerns, please give me a call, because I would, parents want information. They want to know what's going on. They want to begin to plan. So my goal would be to mass push this out sometime tomorrow. I know that's a day before, when I think the governor's going to make his pronouncement. But we would, of course, put the caveat that this is subject to change, should the governor's office put additional requirements.
Right.
And if we do, we'll give you an update. But this is what, what we're thinking, because we need, you know, it's, it's July.
Right.
We have got to, teachers don't even know, some teachers don't even know what their assignment is yet.
Right.
And so we need to get them the information they need to be successful.
Right.
Like I talked to Ron Graham myself, because I had some questions. And he explained, this was, I believe Friday, that the kind of, what he had heard was the green, yellow, and red system, that like, green would mean, like that the county, like every county would have a system like this, and green would mean proceed with appropriate caution levels, but the county is in a good spot. Yellow would mean there's increased risk, and maybe there's going to be some pullbacks on stuff. And, and red would be like a more of a, more of a lockdown, like stuff's going to close. And his answer to me was, like, schools need to be flexible and ready, so that if, if, if it's in the green or the yellow, if that's what's going to be a go, then school can be in the classroom. And if it's getting into the red, looking like that, that the school system could be asked, or the governor can say, "Hey, no more instruction in the schools. It has to be from a distance perspective." And he said, like, all the time, that each district might be asked to be able or flexible to do this volley. Do you think that's true?
I think not only, that, my understanding is the coloring system is coming from the governor's office, and not from the local boards of health. And, and my request of the governor, if the governor of Dewine is listening to this, would be,
Which I'm sure he is.
Which I'm sure he is, you're right. Would be that,
With his mouth.
Would be that if some definitive direction, as it relates to the color. So my understanding is that it's not even just a county, it could be a community, as small as a community. So if, if Willowby, or Will, or Eastlake, or Willwick were to go into the red, I hope that the, that it is not a local decision as to how to respond to red. I'm hoping that the governor will provide guidance to requirements as to what would occur if there is a red. So at this point, I don't know that. I, I, I'm not sure what that means, if that would be a local decision. The other, still unknown to us, would be if there is a series of COVID cases in a particular school building. At what point does it require shutdown, and for how long? And how does it, how do we reemerge from that? And, and I guess part of the messaging, I think that's important for parents to realize, is that this is, as we have to realize as administrators and teachers, this is a very fluid situation. And we have to be able to be flexible, and respond, and adjust quickly. So I would certainly advocate for parents, even if your child is coming back in the fall, and we are able to open in the fall, that you have a backup plan as a family, that you could move to, and really, a day or two notice. And I know how difficult that is for families, but conversely, if, if, you know, one of the things that I find most frustrating about this is, very often, we find ourselves as school boards and school administrators, not being able to choose curriculum at a local level. But while we have a global pandemic, we're being told that's, that's for local control. And that seems backward to me. But nonetheless, that is the situation I think we're going to find ourselves in this fall, in the school year. And we just have to be, respond the best that we can. We'll keep, you know, there's a lot of things that I know are running through all of your heads, and running through my head, student safety, the needs of the parents to earn a living, to put food on their plates of their, and provide for their families. There's a lot here that's, that are, that is in play, especially for, you know, or, most of our families are both working, or in a situation where there's only one parent, and, and they most certainly are working. So that, that is a huge piece of the economic engine, as public schools, you've heard it. We know, we know and understand that. But we have to do it as safely as we can.
I have another question, too, as it pertains to like a latchkey program, like that's, you know, within the elementary, is, is that gonna, like, or there'll be any changes? Like, because I know daycare's got a lot of changes. Will they be able to only take, I've gotten a couple emails from them, because my kid is within that system, but it wasn't definitive with any really information quite yet. It just says, you know, they're, they're working on it. But are they going to be, take less children, you know, or, you know, have some different, or ask for maybe more room in the school, for an after-school, so they could split up some of those children, or something like that?
The challenge, I, I, you know, again, we outsource that to the YMCA. However, you know, we have to work closely with the YMCA to, to, to find the best solution. One of the challenges about spreading it out will be, we'll occupy more building for more hours. And we're already stressed to clean the facilities as if they were empty at 3 o'clock. So we have to balance the need for, again, for the parents to have some daycare, and it's about as cheap as daycare as you're going to find through the YMCA and our YMCA after-school program, yet make sure that that building is safe and ready for kids to return. So the number of kids that will be taken will be a YMCA decision, which isn't, I, I don't suspect even really a YMCA decision. I think that'll be more guidelines that they have to follow for after-school programs. But in terms of how much space they can spread out into, it's just going to have to be a case-by-case basis, based on how effectively and efficiently we can clean the buildings after they leave at 5:30, 6 o'clock.
Now, do they have any responsibility for the cleaning, or to participate in, like, monies for the cleaning at the time that they're using the space for their programming?
We haven't had those discussions yet, but they'll occur. Because certainly, I, I don't anticipate that they would have to clean, but there's going to be an increased cost for cleaning protocols. And, and it's only fair that they would bear some of that responsibility, which would most likely
Pass.
Be passed on to
The parent.
The parent.
Or unfortunately.
Yeah, I, I would think. But again, that's a YMCA decision, not a school district decision.
And then, I'm sure we've all seen comments that talk about, like sanitizing of the playgrounds, the outdoor spaces, and the slides, and the swings, and the jungle gyms, and all this stuff. Like, you know, you know, once again, you said, nobody really knows how long it sticks on stuff. But are the custodians or staff people going to be out sanitizing the jungle gyms outside, and the slides, and the swings, and the outdoor,
Right.
Outdoor spaces as well?
Yeah, it, it will be our intent to spray those spaces. Just like, with the foggers, we can come in, basically, the substance is sprayed on to everywhere in the room, and, and it dries within 20 minutes. And, and it does, it doesn't take a long, a long period of time, but it's an additional step on top of just the regular cleaning that you would do regularly. So yeah, the, the intent is that we will have a schedule for spraying the outdoor equipment as well. But you, if, if you start to calculate in your mind, do you feel those dollars? Do you see them? But if you start to calculate in your mind, do you feel those dollars, do you see them? Little dump, ding, 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 has it? And we have roughly $800,000 in COVID money, in cares money. We'll probably spend $2 to $3 million, far more than the $800,000 that we've received today.
And what about like the bus sanitation, are we responsible for sanitizing the buses?
Well, our, our bus company, Peterman, is, they have to, those buses would have to be sanitized each day.
Well, probably in between bus, bus...
That's going to be very difficult.
In between bus routes with the same bus?
Not, not likely because our buses, the time between one route and the start of the next route is so tight that it's kind of like a city bus in some regards.
City RTA, light transit, daily?
Yeah, so there'll be a daily clean. Obviously, there's some responsibility on the part of the parents, not to send their child to school sick, not running a fever. This wouldn't be the time to pop Tylenol to drive the fever down and come to school. That's, this would definitely not be that time.
I mean, and I know workplaces check temperature, or the recommendation is to check temperature employees, or are we going to check temperature, like one of those little handheld temperature gizmos on the kiddos?
Imagine the process of checking temperatures of 1,400 high school students entering the building. It's just not, and we have two of them per building, by the way, the little handgun that shoots the dot on the forehead. So it is, again, parents need to understand that while we have those and we have the capability of checking temperatures, and we will if a student is sick or a student is complaining, it was absolutely temperature check, that student or that staff member. But the idea that we could somehow check the temperatures of 8,000 kids every day is just not, it's not, it's not practical. We simply could not do that in any expeditious way.
I wonder if like spot tests, like every week, like some students are, you know what I mean, it's like...
I don't see how that would be beneficial though either. I mean, like spot checking, I mean, especially with the asymptomatic, I don't know that you're, you're not just doing it to do it without really, I don't, I don't see the benefit to the district, other than getting use out of those thermometers.
I mean, either, either we have to temperature check them all or temperature check none of them.
Okay. Well, thank you for your report, and certainly is a lot to think about and a lot to try to understand and know that we're trying to get the best information possible to the parents and to also utilize the county health department to find out what the best protocols are.
That's the goal.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is to adjourn the meeting. So, and do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Merhard. Do I hear a second?
Mr. President, I will second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Zern. Is there any discussion? Mr. Parkinson?
Mr. Merhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Zern?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Raskis?